Good morning and welcome to South London City Council Planning Panel. My name's councillor Ray Masheter and I'm Chair of the Planning Panel. Just before we get to the business, I'd just like to present the officers that are present and then we'll move on to, I'll explain the order of business before you. First, Mr Shuttleworth on my right is Lead Officer for Planning Policy. On my left is Mr Hodgson who's Lead Officer for Development Management. I have Miss Edelston who's our clerk today and Miss Wright who's also clerking today. Members of the panel or around the table, we'll introduce them shortly. The order of proceedings this morning will be any applications that are heard. Firstly, officers who are remotely will present the application. Then anybody who's here registered as an objector will be invited to speak. Anyone who is here as a registered applicant or applicant's agent will be invited to speak. And if there's any ward councillors present or MPs or MPs' representatives, they will be then invited to speak. Okay. Following that, we'll make planning decisions based on national and local planning policy. Is that okay? Okay, members. Could we, oh sorry, Miss Edelston, could we just go through the apologies that we've received this morning?
Thank you, Chair. We have apologies from councillors Dickman, Garrido, Morris, Reynolds, Tressadurn and Warmission.
Thank you, Miss Edelston. And, Miss Edelston, would you be so kind to inform the, well, anyone watching or anyone present in the, in the, in the public gallery of which members are present around the panel this morning? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We have councillor Birch, councillor Clark, councillor Cusack, councillor Dawson, councillor Hamilton, councillor Linden, councillor McCusker, yourself councillor Masheter and councillor Taylor.
I think that nine members around the table this morning. Thank you so much. Okay, members, I think it would be very appropriate this time. Councillor Calingarido is, is taking a pause from public life due to ill health, so I think we should, we should very best of luck in, in getting him back as soon as possible. Is that okay? So all the best, Karen, and we'll see you very soon. Thank you. Okay, members, are you happy to include parts one and two of the agenda?
Green.
Any declarations of interest? Who comes first? Councillor Cusack?
Thank you, Chair. The item on the agenda relating to St Luke's Church of England Primary School site is a DEREVE RP scheme and I'm a board member of DEREVE RP.
No problem, councillor Cusack, join that item if you could take a seat in the public gallery, I'd be very grateful. Is that okay?
Certainly.
Councillor McCusker?
Yeah, I'm, before becoming a councillor, I've worked with Inspiring Communities Together, which is the community-led housing element of this application. I'm supporting them with their business planning around this site, so I feel I'm too closely connected.
Okay, councillor McCusker, if you could also take a seat at the public gallery, join that item. Gentlemen, both the seats are all the same price, so get a seat anyway, fancy that, okay? Okay, members, are you happy to approve the minutes from the previous meeting on the 18th of November? No problem. Okay, planning applications, item 5A. It is on your amendment sheet and we do have the planning balance sheet, is that okay? Miss Smith, can I hear you yourself?
Yeah, good morning, Chair.
Miss Smith, and then could you go forward a slide and back a slide please, Miss Smith?
Yeah, I'll share it now.
There we go. Is it, is that okay? We'll say goodbye to councillor McCusker and councillor Cusack into the public gallery. Miss Edelston, I think that we now have seven voting members around the table, is that correct?
That's correct, Chair.
Thank you so much. Okay, Miss Smith, over to you yourself.
Thank you. This application relates to the former St Luke's Church of England Primary School in Wiest and seeks permission for the erection of 68 dwellings in the form of 32 houses and 36 apartments. The site sits between Eccles New Road and the railway line and M602 motorway. The adjacent length of Eccles New Road contains tracks and overhead lines...
Miss Smith, oh sorry, there we go, we've, we've got your presentation back.
Can you see that, sorry?
Is that okay? Thank you.
The adjacent length of Eccles New Road contains tracks and overhead lines for the Metrolink and the Wiest Metrolink stop located approximately 100 metres west of the site. St Luke's School relocated to Wiest Lane several years ago and all buildings on the site have been demolished. To the east and west of the site are residential dwellings. To the south-east is the Grade Two listed Coates and Hawse's Public House and to the south-west is the former Gray mare inn which has been converted into a Travels Hotel. Further south on the opposite side of Eccles New Road is a trading estate that extends down to Media City. Of the 32 houses, eight will have two bedrooms, 20 will have three bedrooms and four will have four bedrooms. Of the apartments, 18 will have one bedroom and 18 will have two bedrooms. The mix and type of housing proposed is based on housing need as identified by the council's housing strategy and enabling team. Forty-four of the units will remain with Salford City Council and 24 of the units are expected to be transferred to Inspiring Communities Together who are a registered charity with a housing-led vehicle. Seventy-five per cent of the dwellings overall will be offered and retained as affordable units. The development will be formed around one spine road with a central loop road keeping vehicular access towards the side streets. All apartments are situated to the north of the site and the houses and apartments consist of a range of two and three-storey buildings. This top street scene image shows the view of the development from Eccles New Road with the Travels Hotel in white and the listed pub shown to depict its materiality, the proposed three-storey dwellings in between. A pedestrian route will be created alongside the three, sorry, alongside the heritage asset to enhance views towards the public house. The other images show the dwellings along the new internal roads. All of the dwellings will share design characteristics to ensure that the development appears coherent. To show how the various dwelling types will appear coherently designed, this slideshow is examples of the elevation detailing with large windows and brick detailing to break up the massing. The window openings will have deep reveals for visual interest and the dwellings will feature energy efficiency features including being airtight, super insulated with high-performance windows and doors. The development will be accessed from the side streets that feature existing vehicular access points. The current main site access from Eccles New Road, shown here, will be closed and this is where the tree-lined pedestrian and cycle-only route will be created. This directs vehicular traffic away from the key route network of Eccles New Road and Metrolink infrastructure and creates a green space alongside the listed building. The houses will be served by one off-road parking space for each three-bedroomed house. The houses with four bedrooms will be served by two parking spaces and the apartments will be served by dedicating parking areas for each block. For cyclists, the north-western apartment block will have 67% cycle storage provision and the site, the central and north-eastern apartments will have 92% provision. The development will require the removal of five individual trees and seven-and-a-half tree groups. Three of the trees and four of the groups have been assessed as being Category B trees of moderate value and two trees and four groups have been assessed as Category C low-value trees. That said, it's been reported and agreed that the trees are all low-value individually. The development will result in a loss of 1.11 biodiversity habitat units representing a 36% loss. In line with the biodiversity hierarchy, it's the intention to provide replacement tree planting and to enhance the retained habitat. The cycling bin stores will also feature green roofs. The replacement tree planting will be secured by condition which will also give Network Rail the opportunity to review the planting scheme to ensure that any new planting will not impact the stability of railway land. In addition, a condition has been recommended to secure a biodiversity enhancement scheme with mitigation required to equate to £9,693 as calculated by Greater Manchester Ecology Unit following their review of the biodiversity metric. The agent is currently considering the enhancement of an alternative council-owned site. With these conditions and suitable mitigation, the proposal is considered to be acceptable. The development will bring a vacant and dilapidated but sustainably located site back into use visually enhancing the site and street scene with a high percentage of much-needed affordable, energy-efficient homes. The harm by reason by a loss of trees and biodiversity habitat can be suitably mitigated with replacement planting and a biodiversity enhancement scheme. A viability assessment has demonstrated that the development is unviable and requires Homes England funding to deliver. The application is recommended for approval subject to conditions as detailed on pages 22 to 29 of the main report and the list of approved plans under condition two has been updated on the amendment sheet. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Miss Smith, thank you so much. Okay, I don't believe I have any objectors present, but I do have the applicants and applicant's agent. Mr Vince, are you speaking this morning? Thank you, Helen, thank you. Mr Vince, is five minutes sufficient? Is five minutes sufficient?
Yes.
Oh, great. Whenever you want to get started, over to you yourself.
Yep, I wish to speak in favour of the proposed development and why we support affordable housing, the supporting, the affordable housing offer, sorry. Support the affordable housing offer that this development of the site provides. St Luke's forms part of the next phase of the council's direct delivery programme of affordable housing and our aim is to increase the delivery of affordable housing in the city and to meet the city mayor's priority to deliver truly affordable housing. As I know you're aware, scarcity of affordable housing and homelessness continue to be a major issue for residents in the city. 4,502 households presented as homeless in the city in 2021, a 12% increase on 1920 and part of an ongoing annual increases. Numbers in temporary accommodation can continue to rise. Currently, we have 350 households in temporary accommodation. This is an 18% increase in the past six months. One of the issues is having insufficient move-on properties. As of April 2021, there were 5,000 households registered on the city's housing register. On average, there are 99 bids per property advertised in this area and this is above the Salford average of 86 bids with 129 bids per house advertised. The proposed development of the underused Brownfield site will deliver a scheme with 75% affordable homes significantly higher than the policy requirement. It provides a range of much-needed affordable homes consisting of 22 houses, two-to-four-bed and 30 apartments. The house types have been developed with known housing needs in mind, including four-bed houses and I'd just like to point out that the supply of four beds against demand means that applicants can be waiting on average over eight years to get a four-bedroomed house. The scheme also includes wheelchair-accessible units including two one-bed apartments and two three-bedroomed houses, a very limited supply of wheelchair-accessible accommodation found in the city and only one one-bed wheelchair-adapted property became available in 1920 and none in the previous year in this area. We have tried to develop a scheme that creates a mix of property types and tenures with a strong affordable housing offer but that provides a range of housing needs and aspirations. The council has 100% nominations for the affordable homes which will be let and allocated to those on the housing register. Across the city, a number of properties, the number of properties becoming available for re-letting is falling with 1,133 re-letting 2020. The nearest new supply of affordable housing is in the Pendleton area at Amersham Street and at Cara Street in Seedley which is somewhere away from this area. All the homes align to national described space standards and are designed to a high standard and the scheme has scored highly against the Building for Healthy Life criteria. The council has set itself high thermal and low carbon standards and the homes will be built to a very high thermal efficiency standards with an emphasis on fabric-first approach and no gas. This supports the council's ambition to reduce carbon emissions for the city to be carbon-neutral by 2038 but also helping to address fuel poverty for residents. It is also, it also sets a benchmark for registered providers and other developers around environmental sustainability. In summary, the demand for affordable homes is high in the city and increasing. This scheme provides a strong affordable housing offer above policy requirements with a flexible, adaptable, high-quality, energy-efficient scheme that helps mitigate fuel poverty. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr Vince, thank you so much. Okay, there's nobody else on the applicant and applicant's agent side. There's no ward members present who wish to speak. Okay, members, could I just make you aware that you do have your planning balance sheet? If you could have that in front of you while you're making a decision on this planning application, that would be very good. It is also presented on the screen in front of us too. So, okay, any members wishing to speak? Councillor Hamilton? Councillor Dawson?
Thanks, Chair, yeah. I really like the fact that we've worked round the Grade Two listed pub. I like the amount of affordable units, I like the tenure, I like the energy efficiency and the biodiversity scheme. And I also like where the four bed is, you've got two car parking spaces, so I'm happy to move it.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton. Councillor Hamilton, could I, could I just ask, you know, the biodiversity scheme, can we, can we put in the, can, well, can we, can we make a note, Miss Smith, can we, would you be happy to agree with me on this? Miss Smith, with the biodiversity scheme, the panel don't want to approve or disprove it, we're quite happy for it to stay delegated to officers, but could we, could we see the scheme that eventually comes, comes to fruition?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Because going forward, members, what we're going to be seeing is we're going to be seeing much more allocation to biodiversity net gain and it would just be nice to see what, what industry and what the city and what other applicants they're doing to solve or to get to biodiversity net gain, so, so it'd be nice to see the solutions out there as we go forward. Thank you. Councillor Dawson? Councillor Dawson, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Looking at this development, it looked a good overall development, but I just want some assurances about the, the design inside. We've mentioned high thermal, fuel poverty and also in the report there's reference to triple glazing and other things. So, one thing that I want clarity on is the condensation levels because I know certain housing providers are putting literally millions of pounds aside to improve their properties and I wonder if this is the opportune time to make sure that ventilation, which is a key design in keeping the condensation levels low, is fully incorporated and it also, the ventilation would link very closely to the fuel poverty and the thermal values of the building. Without getting the ventilation right, it may not achieve the thermal gain we're hoping for. So, have we got an air change and mechanical ventilation system? How will it achieve that low condensational level by good ventilation in the rooms? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dawson. Miss Smith, did, did you get all that? Are we straying down to, are we straying down the line of building regs? But is the applicant putting mechanical ventilation in etc?
Yes, there will be mechanical ventilation and anything else will be captured by building regs.
Okay. Councillor Dawson, there is mechanical ventilation. Is that okay? Okay, councillor Clark?
Can I just clarify that only two of the properties are wheelchair accessible?
Miss Smith?
It's four, four of the properties, it's two of the apartments and two houses.
Okay, four of them. Is that okay?
No, no, it's not, no, it's not good enough. This is a clean sheet design and it's supposed to be affordable and solving our housing problem for residents. These all should be wheelchair accessible, it's only making doors wider and it's not good enough. We're not serving the whole community here, just four people on wheelchairs can go into those homes, it's not good enough. We need to be doing better than that. Can I ask, how are the heated? Is it just purely electric or is it community heating system?
Miss Smith, what's our policy on accessibility on the wheelchair accessible properties?
As far as I'm aware, Chair, there isn't an actual policy on wheelchair accessible units. It doesn't preclude other units from being accessed by wheelchairs. This does come down to a building regs matter and in terms of the heating, I don't have that information as part of this application.
Okay, Miss Smith. Miss Smith, how material is how the, how the properties are heated in our planning balance?
Again, it's not something that we normally go into that much detail on other than knowing that they are energy efficient, efficient dwellings with no gas, but there is no specific policy that requires certain heating provision.
No problem, Miss Smith, I'll bring the applicant and forget that answer, but we mustn't give it weight in our planning decision. But I do want to bring in Mr Shuttleworth. Mr Shuttleworth, we sound a bit policy light on wheelchair accessible properties and we do have our local plan coming forward. Could we, could we give our local plan any weight in this situation?
Thank you, Chair. In this situation, we have got a policy coming through our local plan which addresses accessibility requirements and looking to improve accessibility arrangements for new properties. It's one of the policies which people have raised queries about as it will be tested through the examination next week, so it's not one we can give weight to just yet councillor Clark, but we're hopeful that in the near future it will be one that will be considered part of the plan and obviously not too long future it will be part of our local plan, so it'll be something that applies to all developments.
Well, it's good to know we've got a possibility of a bright future, a brighter future ahead, but it sounds like our policy, future policy has been challenged, members, by, by the industry for whatever reason and so we can't apply our local plan with that at the moment, although I'm sure we would like to, is that okay?
It is disappointing that we've got a clean sheet design here which is going to go to the council, yet we cannot facilitate disabled people.
Oh, we've got four, so it's not, it's not a blanket, no, is it? So, Mr Vince, heating in the property, I know it's not a weight to the planning application and members, we do need to get back to material planning considerations. Mr Vince, how are the properties being heated? Just shout at me, I can hear you, don't worry. No problem, that's the planning balance that we've put on our sheet, thank you so much. Okay, councillor Birch?
Thank you, Chair. Considering the dire need for the social housing in the city and in Greater Manchester to see 75% of this, of these properties being offered for, as affordable housing, I would like to second the councillor Hamilton's proposal to approve the scheme. Thank you.
Good, councillor Birch. Okay, members, anybody else? Nope? Okay, it's been moving, secondary for approval. All in favour of the approval, please show. Anyone against and any abstentions? Okay, Miss Edelston, I believe that was six votes, four and one abstention. The application's been approved. Thank you so much. Okay, councillor McCusker, councillor Cusack? Thank you, Mr Vince. You're, you're free to leave if you so wish. Thank you so much. Okay, members. Application determined a delegated authority, are you happy to note them? Is that, is that okay? And then we do have planning appeals. Are you happy to note the planning appeals? We have received one decision, it was a delegated decision on the railway inn and that was, that was, that was won by the city and also we didn't have any costs against us because we won the, the appeal. And then we do have received an appeal from a refusal for a telecommunications tower delegated decision. So that's okay. Are you happy to note that, members? Oh, thank you. Okay. And then planning enforcement report, Mr Stevenson?
Morning, Chair. I'll, I'll share my screen just so it's up on screen as well. Hopefully you can see that. Yeah, so this first slide is just showing the number of enforcement cases that we've received so far this year. You can see in the top right-hand corner there, we've received a total of 220 cases. You can see on, on average, month by month, it's about 25 to 30 cases each month we receive.
Just slow you down for a moment. Members, the, the slides are in your report if you're just struggling to see the numbers on the presentation, is that okay? Sorry, sorry, Mr Stevenson, I just needed to bring members up to speed that your slides are in the report so they can get down to see the real detail, is that okay?
No problem at all.
Over to you yourself, sorry about that, Mr Stevenson.
So, as I was saying, this, we receive about 25 to 30 cases per month on average. You can see the breakdown of what those cases relate to, so in 120 cases, which amounts to 55% of cases, it's where people are claiming that some form of development's taken place without planning permission. The second largest group of enforcement cases that we receive is where people are saying there's been some form of breach of planning permission and you can see the other types of breaches against trees, adverts, high hedges, relatively, relatively small numbers that we receive there. We're still in crossover period for wards, a number of enforcement cases are pre-date when the wards changed, so we do have quite a few wards there, but it does give you a flavour for where in the city we are receiving those enforcement cases. The second slide are the cases that we have closed down. So again, we've closed down 210 cases since April this year, so it's a similar number to what we've received. Again, you can see that in 47% of cases, following investigation, it's been determined that there's been no breach of planning whatsoever. In 23% of cases, you can see that through the action of enforcement officers and informal action that the breach has been resolved and no further action taken. And the third largest category there, where 16% of cases have been investigated, it's been determined that there's a very small breach which doesn't warrant further enforcement action. So you can see the vast majority of cases that are investigated tend not to have any significant breach with them or indeed are dealt with through informal action and it's only a very, very small proportion that are dealt with through formal notices being served. So in terms of where we currently are now, we've got 226 live enforcement investigations ongoing. You can see that 54% of those, 122 cases, again, are cases where people are stating that something's taken place without the benefit of planning permission and with a further 61 cases being where there's a claim that an existing planning permission has been breached in some form, either non-compliance with approved plans or perhaps a condition on there. And finally, this slide just shows the percentage of enforcement cases which have a linked planning application. So that might be that as a result of enforcement action, we've received a planning application in and it's gone through the, the full public process before reaching a resolution on that. And that was all I wanted to say on the enforcement report, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Stevenson. It's, this is the second time we've presented like this, it's fabulous stuff. The next report in the next quarter will be a couple of case, yeah, case studies. Members always enjoy a good case study.
Yeah, we did, we did have a chat to see whether there was anything that we felt would be of benefit to share with you. We didn't have anything for this one, but certainly we'll, we'll look to bring some case studies forward for the next meeting.
Oh, fabulous, thank you. Could we please thank the enforcement team on behalf of the panel for all the work that they do out there? I know it's, they're a small team and it's, it's, behavioural change is, is a, is a great challenge and they challenge with that every day, so can we send thanks to them? Councillor Dawson, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Just for more information, priority improvements, the big area, and it's not the first time, is without planning and I'm just wondering if we can actually, as you do with all statistics, once you see the big one, you break it down, that big one. So can we do that to actually identify why are people doing so many without planning developments? Is it just they're trying to save money, they don't want to pay our fee? Or is it some, you know, another malicious, you know, way that they think they won't get it through? You know, or is it just a genuine thing that they thought this doesn't need planning permission? So it's a breakdown so we can understand that it's, it's the biggest numbers, but it's to get a breakdown of that big number. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dawson. Yeah, Mr Stevenson, I imagine you just clicked the column and had a look at the breakdown at your end?
Chair, I think, I think councillor Dawson's misunderstanding slightly what this is, is people who are claiming that something's taken place without the benefit of planning permission. So we register it as such and then carry out the investigation. In the majority of cases following an investigation, it's concluded that there hasn't been a breach of planning, but we obviously have to start from that point of view. So here, this is where we receive the cases and as I say, 55% of the cases, we get 120 people saying, I think something's happened without the benefit of planning permission. But if we jump through to cases closed, we can... we can see that ninety-eight cases in that same period, nearly half, following investigation, we've decided that there's been no breach. So there's quite a close correlation of numbers there between people claiming there's been a breach of planning and following investigation has confirmed that actually there hasn't been a breach of planning.
Does that help, councillor Dawson?
Well, yeah, saying that they didn't need planning permission at all, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just wasn't clear about that clarity.
There's clearly a lot of people out there with the planning enforcement telephone number, so, yes. Yeah, so it's been very well advertised, clearly. councillor McCusker, sorry councillor McCusker, I was so getting deep in the data, I wasn't looking at people.
That's a different issue about the amount of resources that the council's having to expend investigating cases where there isn't any planning breach. I'm just trying to think, is there a way of filtering that out more swiftly so we're not spending lots of time looking at issues where there is no issue?
Yeah, Mr Hodgson, I'll bring Mr Hodgson on.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. councillor McCusker, quite recently, we've been obviously looking at this particular issue, so it's a very pertinent point and we revamped the website. And basically, on the enforcement pages, we're trying to encourage people to self-help by directing them to to pick up the point that councillor Dawson made, to like permit the development rights. So people, whether they will or not remains to be seen, but obviously trying to direct them to resources that are pretty user-friendly. So there's, for example, there's an interactive house on the planning portal that takes you through PD rights because that's one of the reasons one of the reasons why we get a number of those complaints because the person who is alleging the breach obviously didn't know the rules either, which is understandable in terms of general public. So we are trying to tackle that through that process. And it is being pretty effective at the moment to try and control, almost like it's like a gatekeeper, a gateway into the resource, to try and filter out some of those inquiries. And I think it's something we just need to keep monitoring. And I think also we're looking forward to in terms of how we can close down some of these investigations really quickly. So we are looking potentially at being able to have more mobile working. So if we use one example of an officer visits a site and there's clearly no breach, they can actually, through the technology, do a very almost quick report on-site and then press a button and it sends it back to the system, so it closes it down. So I think we're trying to direct the results to those most pressing cases, you know, that are causing a breach or some particular real problem. I'm trying to deal with these other matters as efficiently as possible, Chair. So it is a work in progress and I think it's a very good point to make and we're trying to deal with that head-on. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much. No problem. Thank you, councillor Dawson. Back to the show.
Yeah, I've just flashed back to memories, or recent memories, in my, in the old Swindon North Ward. One in Wesley Street, one at the back of Ash Drive. And both of them were put forward as breach of planning, but both of them came back that it wasn't. Now, one was building and blocking off a complete back alley, so the bin man couldn't use it, it was public land. Another one, again, was a developer going across a public right away from a terrace law of housing, so they couldn't move their bins and get access to the back of the properties. And in both cases, it was said it's civil law, so therefore it's not a breach of planning. But it's a very serious issue for people living in those areas that should get clear feedback that this is civil enforcement or, you know, some other way of dealing with it. So technically, it wasn't planning, but it was utterly wrong of what that person who was building on that land did. So it's how we can guide people.
Yeah, I know. I'm sure the team do. I'm sure the team do afterwards. I mean, Mr Hodgson, I can see you nodding there a bit through the back of my head.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, exactly, Chair. I mean, I suppose our first task is to, once we investigate, to understand is there a breach of planning law that the council's got some jurisdiction over? I mean, we will always work with other departments, you know, if the council are involved to see whether there's landlord or is it one of our assets, we can try and resolve those issues. But ultimately, getting back to councillor McCusker's point, if we're going to use our resources properly, whilst we will direct people to other sources, we can't get that involved, Chair, because otherwise we're just diverting those very valuable resources away from our key service requirements. Good, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Hodgson. Okay, Mr Stevenson, please pass on our thanks to the team. Very grateful. Okay, thank you so much, members. That's the end of today's agenda. There's no urgent business, there's no need to exclude the public, there's no part two, et cetera. Thank you ever so much for watching, if you did so this morning. Mr Williams, would you end the live stream, please?